I'd like to begin the meeting. First, I'd like to welcome all the preservers to the meeting. And we're always glad to see community participation in our board meetings. Just to give you a little bit of an explanation, this is the first meeting of the month. It's our business meeting. And the board discusses and votes on items. And the first part of our agenda is the public comments section, which we encourage people to bring issues to the board and we ask that they limit their comments to five minutes. The executive session that follows where we discuss issues that are either confidential or legal personnel, it's on student issues. And the board needs to be privately with this portion of the meeting. After that, then we reconvene in public session and take issues, action on issues. And if you have any questions about any of the things that go on during the board meeting, we encourage you to talk to any of the board members. Tonight's meeting, before we get started with our printed agenda, we have a special presentation to make. And it's to award a diploma to Max Bernard, who was here this evening. And we'd like to ask you to step forward so you can take a picture and I can present the photo. We're very, very proud of a student, not only because he's actually graduating, but because he also decided to go into these armed services. So Max, on behalf of the Canary School District, would like to give you this diploma and say how proud we are that you've gotten to this point.
Thank you.
Okay? And also, thanks very much. And we'd like, if you want to, we'd love to hear some of your thoughts about what the decision you made to do after getting the diploma. And it's up to you.
Are you in the forefront?
Yeah.
I don't know, I think it's a great opportunity. This is another lucky person to provide.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we're really proud of you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first point on the, first of all, is there anyone who has questions to address at the board from the public? So the first point on the agenda is a presentation by the SCI group about our forthcoming capital project. So Eric?
Thanks, thanks for having me. Does anybody want me to talk about SCI for like a minute before we get into the project? Anybody have any questions about us or who we are? Okay. So quick capital project update. Sure, Sean, let you go to the next slide. Here's what I plan on talking about, a little bit about the history of where we've gone so far, project scope in a little bit more detail, estimates, our financial plan for moving forward, and then what the next steps are. So you guys, when we interviewed, had a large scope of work for us to consider. We put prices to all that, and of course, the prices came, just like home, the prices came in much higher than what you're actually going to be able to afford right now. So we had to figure out how we're going to move forward. Like home, do you decide to do kitchen now, or do you do it later? Do you put the carpet off until a little bit later? So we presented an approach that we think might work to group a series of health and safety and energy savings items into an approximately $5 million project, and then to consider a series of additional projects in the future, including another capital improvement project, an energy performance contract, and I can talk a little bit about that, and then a series of capital improvement projects. So it's a lot of jargon. Capital improvement projects are adds and alts or general renovations. Capital outlay projects are a specific funding stream that SED allows where a district can do right now. It's set at $100,000 per year, and then you get all the aid back, your building aid ratio, back on that whole project the next year. So if you continue to do those and keep rolling them along, basically you get all your aid and it ends up being kind of a free project over time. And it's SED's way to encourage continued upkeep of your buildings. Because right now, if you rely on capital improvement projects, the big renovation projects, it's really set up in a way that you have to wait for things to fall apart before you can take care of them. And the best example I have is if you're going to do pavement in a capital improvement project, you can't just put a seal coating on top of your pavement and get it paid for. You can't just put a new top coat on top of your pavement and get it paid for. You have to take it all the way back down to the dirt and then build it back up again. So you have to let it go to the point where it's really bad and then reconstruct it. So that's why SED is encouraging $100,000 projects, and we think it's a good opportunity to take care of those onesie-twosie things. If you've got air handling units or door hardware, door replacements, those kind of things that you can group together in typically 75, 80,000 dollar chunks, because there's soft costs that go along with that, R fees, attorney's fees, secret resolutions, and all that kind of stuff that you have to pay for as well. So you do 75,000 chunks every year. Anybody want to talk about energy performance contracts, or you want me to just keep going?
Go ahead and talk about energy performance contracts.
Okay. There's two types of energy performance contracts. There's ones that you vote on and ones that you don't vote on. I think that the district is, if you can, it's in your best interest to take advantage of undertaking your own energy performance contract. And that's a project that you do and specifically involves energy savings measures, and it has to pay for itself over 18.
18.
18, 1/8, yep. And if you undertake the project yourself, you get a 10% incentive that you don't get to take advantage of if you do it without a vote. If you're doing it without a vote, you're using an ESCO or an energy performance provider, like Honeywell or Johnson Controls, you actually have in the district right now. They fund the project, and that's why there's not that extra 10%. Still get building aid on it, but not the 10% incentive. It's been around since 90s, I think. Depending on doing it without a vote is that you're not paying for it. The drawback to that is that the energy savings are going to the ESCO provider. So Johnson Controls is basically taking your bill stays.
Your bill stays plaid.
Your bill stays plaid. So if you're doing something that pays for itself in six years or three years, that money continues to pay the ESCO for what they did to fund that project.
And how long do they get the money versus we see the savings?
18, 18 years.
So if it pays back in six years, they're making 12 years of profit and...
Yep. But in a situation like yours, where you've got $5 million right now to pay for a project and not the full, you'll see where we're at in about 19 and change of stuff to consider, then an energy performance contract specifically for that stuff that takes a lot longer to pay for makes sense to try and make... So what we've tried to do is to talk to an energy performance, we're actually talking to Johnson Controls right now, to see if they consider that long payoff stuff to help with a project. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in detail, but that's the basis of energy performance contracting. Let you go. Thanks. So I'll talk about the scope, and then we'll divvy it up into funding streams. This is set up in a building-by-building basis, and the things that are in phase one, we're going to concentrate on phase one tonight, and phase one is what we're proposing to move forward with for you guys to consider going to referendum. And that's the health and safety item. So we've priced and feel comfortable adding in secure entries across the three buildings. The second item on this list for East Hill complex is something that you didn't ask us to consider. Right now, water in the, or the way the boilers work in East Hill, they create steam and they immediately get converted to hot water, and then the hot water gets distributed out to the building. It's not really energy efficient, because you have to create really high temperatures to create the steam. If you go to a hot water boiler system, you're going to save energy, because you're not raising the temperature, the water out is high. So I think that's a quick payback, and that's why it's on the capital improvement project list as opposed to on the EPC list. There's some roof reconstruction along the Nellis Lane corridor that takes, goes from the school up to the pool. There are door and hardware replacements that we've considered, video camera upgrades, it's the stuff that's been on your list and that we've talked about before. The great room floor tiles that seem to have tectonic plate movement. We're considering thermal solar for the pool, because it's an energy savings item. And the pool filter pump is a little undersized right now, so we're going to try and take care of that as part of the capital improvement project. Phase two, what we thought we could do, you asked us to consider canopies, but they're really expensive, so we suggested pushing that off into a second project, a second capital improvement project, along with any site work that's associated, because you have to bust out the sidewalks to pour the foundations and the footings and that kind of stuff. So it makes sense to put that stuff off for a little later. And then that longer payback, energy saving items, we asked Johnson Controls to look at initially, and I'll talk a little bit more about EPCs in a second. Heating controls upgrades, rooftop air handling units, and then lighting upgrades. Lighting upgrades we had to offer, because we thought that the other things were such a long payback, that we needed to balance things out to make the EPC work. Thanks. It's the same kind of list at the high school. Entries, door hardware, videos. We added a master clock system. We actually pushed the roofing from the high school off to phase two, and Gary and I are exploring whether or not there's a warranty extension available that we can do for a lot less than a roof replacement project. So I'm exploring how much cost that is. We've contacted Firestone, who actually manufactured the membrane that's up on the high school, on the flat part of the roofs, low slope roofs. And they do offer a warranty extension program, but we just haven't come up with the final details yet, so we'll report out on that as time goes on.
So I had a general question on a couple items.
Sure.
I just want to ask you, how do you want this to flow?
Ask away.
Want to kind of walk through, or...
No, it's informal, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
So on the rooftops, the heating units, what's life expectancy of them, and is this, is there a reason why we're looking at replacing them now? Is it an efficiency gain? Because it doesn't seem like they should be that old yet, but I just wanted to ask you.
Life expectancy is about 15 to 20 years. If you had that same fan unit inside of the building, I would say that that's going to last 30 years, probably, but the weather doesn't number on the systems that are up on top of the roof exposed. Gary started to see some problems with a couple of ones. He had to replace compressors.
Yes.
Was it this building?
Yes.
Yeah. And that was for one unit to the tune of...
$12,000.
Yeah, I don't know if it was $12,000. So a new unit itself is probably in, depending on the size, $20,000 to $40,000. We put in average prices for the, when we budgeted things out. And actually, that's a good lead-in for some of the prices that you guys have seen. We put in conservative prices for you, because we're not sure exactly how, and the best example is the great room floor tiles. I put in pricing for replacing it with an epoxy terrazzo floor, a 3A inch floor. It's a lot more expensive than if we were going to do a vinyl tile floor, but if you go to vote and wanted to include that right now, you can do that. If you want to go back to the vinyl tile, we can save the money and not have to borrow the full amount, and it goes back to the district, so.
So your costs that you're putting in here are on the high end of an estimate?
Right, for two reasons. I'm not going to win the bid. I'm not a contractor. I want to make sure that you guys have enough money to do the project. I don't want to come back and say, huh, surprise, can't do the great room floor tiles, I really screwed up. So, and if you do have an opportunity to pick, you know, sort of the good, better, best, I want you to have the opportunity to pick the best if you want to, and scale back if you want.
That's good to know. And along the same line, this, you were just on the roof. Life expectancy on the kinds of roofs we have, should we be considering a different kind of roof if we're going to replace stuff that has a better life expectancy? Just logistical stuff so that we can, again, make trade-off decisions, right?
So the kind of roof you have is not, it's not a super high-end roof, and it's not a super low-end roof. It's a good mid-range, and it's very appropriate for a school building. You don't have chemicals or radioactivity going up out of exhaust fans that blow down on the roof, so you don't have to have a roof that can withstand that kind of, be that kind of robust system. The nice thing about EPDM rubber roofs is that they do withstand a lot of flexure, so when it gets hot in the summer and everything sort of tightens up, and then gets, sorry, the other way around, gets loose, and in summer when it tightens up, it can withstand those forces over 15, 20 years that they're expected to be around. Your roof here has been on the building for 15 years, and we are seeing some leaks. So that's why we're considering the warranty extension, because we think that the majority of the roof is in decent condition. When we walked it, there weren't obvious signs that, you know, this is all bubbled up, and it's really bad under here. But in order to determine the specific areas that we want to address as part of a project, we're in the process of getting somebody to come up and do a roof scan. It wants to start happening about this time of year when it cools down, because the heat from the building goes up, sits in the wet insulation, and then they go over with an infrared camera or drone, and you can see what's hot and what's cool. So the cool areas we want to address, because that's where the water is, and we know that's where the leak is. And we can shrink down the amount of roof replacement or roof reconstruction we have to do.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other general kind of questions? So similar to what we did at East Hill by trying to place some of the more expensive things that aren't safety or energy savings, we pushed the fitness center expansion and parking area into a potential phase two project in terms of chunking it out for money. We're not saying we're not doing it, we just think that we need to come up with a little bit more money to take care of it when you do it. The roof reconstruction here and the parking for the fitness center. And then same scheme for energy performance contracts. Yeah, Siri. Siri, sorry that we're entertaining an energy performance contract. Okay? Bus garage? Similar stuff. Access control upgrades means adding key fobs or card readers to the outside of the building, so you don't have to carry a set of keys around. Accessibility means getting rid of a little lip at the front entry, so that if you have somebody in a wheelchair that needs access and all the other doors are closed, they don't have to go all the way around to the back of the building to get in. Quick and easy fix, and it's something that SED we think is going to ask us to take care of no matter what. And there's really no video cameras at the bus garage, so we put in a budget to accommodate that. EPC, if we do undertake an EPC, heating controls and lighting. Thanks. So I mentioned that we had a really big number that we had to deal with, 19 million plus, and we chunked it out into different projects. CIP stands for capital improvement project. First one's about $5 million. Right now, with all the escalation involved and pushing things out a couple of years, we're at 4.3 for phase two. And then we had almost an $11 million energy performance group of considerations. We think that number's high, and we're asking Johnson Controls in to give us a better number on the controls portion of things. Go ahead.
But I think the way you've explained EPC, if we truly go to EPC, that's not really the money we're spending.
Correct. It counts against your, sorry, didn't mean to talk over.
No, go ahead.
It's going to count against what the state says you're spending on projects. So one thing I haven't even talked about is called maximum cost allowance. As a school district, you can spend any amount of money that you want to in the whole world on a school project. If you want to spend $100 million on building a new high school building, the state will let you do that. But they calculate how many building aid units you're going to get and turn that into an amount called the maximum cost allowance that they'll aid up to. Let's say for round numbers, let's say that's $30 million. So if you wanted to do a $100 million project, they pay building aid on $30 million. And let's make the numbers easy, let's say you're 50% able, you're 86.8, let's say you're 50, so they'll pay 15 million. Then if you wanted to do the $100 million project, you'd have to pay that full 70 million plus the other 15, so you're paying 85.
So how does the EPC fit into that?
So EPC counts, so SED's been trying to figure out ways to throttle back spending, right, to keep school spending lower and lower as time goes on. So they said, not only do you have a maximum cost allowance, but we're going to only let you spend the maximum cost allowance every five years. So every project that you do within those five years counts against your maximum cost allowance. If you do a $2 million, let's keep the same $30 million school, that 50% aid. If you do a $2 million project, a million dollars comes off, or 2 million comes off the maximum cost allowance, you're paying a million in school, or SED's paying a million. Then you decide to do a $10 million project within that five years, they'll pay five, and you pay five. Six million comes off, or sorry, you're right, 12 comes off of the maximum cost allowance. So you've got another, what is that, 18 left to do another project, if you so desire.
And does that, is it a rolling five?
It's a rolling five.
Okay.
Yep, so it sort of marches along. So we've looked at that, and you've got plenty of capacity in your maximum cost allowances right now for everything that we're considering. If you had the money right now, you could do all of these projects and still stay within the maximum cost allowance. Okay?
What would that leave us if we needed to do something in the balance of the five years?
I can't remember, what we were at. It was in the...
I believe they were like 17 million per building.
Right, and...
So you're at 34.
Right, 17 was the construction cost. So to make things more complicated, SED chunks it into construction costs and incidental expenses. I think it was in the roughly 10 million range, if I remember right, approximately.
So if we had an emergency need, like the wind blew the roof off, we could still have enough money left to fix something like that?
You could, but SED doesn't look at emergency projects as coming out against your maximum cost.
Okay.
So if the roof did blow off, what you, what they pay for in an emergency is what it takes to bring things back to weather tight. So if the wind blew off and a branch blew in one of the windows, they'd pay to bring the roof back on and make it weather tight, and they'd pay for a new window, but they might not pay for all the damages that came. So yeah, they're expecting insurance to come help you with that stuff.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure, sure.
Eric, the maximum cost allowance for that high school was 17 million, and the East Hill was 12.
So a total of 34, and we're considering 20, so, and it's split up between construction and incidental, so I don't know that exactly. So moving forward from this slide, I'm going to concentrate on this, but we can talk a little bit more about energy performance before I do that. So energy performance contracts, you've got a couple steps to talk to an ESCO, an energy service company, to entertain whether or not you want to go with an energy performance contract. And we're in those first discussions right now with Johnson. The first discussion, the first jumping off point is, we ask somebody to come in for an informal review of the facilities, come up with a potential cost, and whether they think that there's an opportunity to do an energy performance contract that's going to be beneficial to them. Johnson has said, yep, we think that there is, but we only, we think it's only going to be a million and a half dollar project, roughly. So between now and the end of the year, we have to sort of regroup and figure out how we're going to rechunk out the future work. There is debt rolling off in 2024, 2025 that could entertain a second capital improvement project, so we just need to sort of regroup for the rest of it. We feel comfortable where we are right now in phase one, and then come up with a plan so that it's not lost into the ether somewhere. The second jumping off point for an energy performance contract is, once that initial step is taken, we ask for a formal RFP from more than just the one company that has come to talk to you. Everybody gives you a proposal, and it's not necessarily an oranges or apples-to-apples comparison, because one company might be strong in geothermal or solar, and the other company's strong in controls and boilers. So each company's going to give you what they think they're going to save the most energy with in your group of buildings. It's tough to evaluate sometimes. But what we'll do, we'll work with Mr. Johnson, who's an engineer, is helping us out with the project, to tailor the proposal to ask for specific side tasks if we get to the point where we want to do that. So it probably would make, I think it probably would make sense to continue entertaining that $1.5 million ESCO EPC, and then consider chunking out the remainder into a capital improvement project that you undertake yourself and get the savings as much as you can.
So if I've collected this correctly, we would want to put the long return stuff in the EPC.
Correct.
And have them take that over.
Yep.
And then put the short rate of return stuff on the things we do a capital improvement for, so that we start seeing the savings quickly, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
So concentrating on phase one, what we looked at is the total project cost, that 10986, 750. These numbers might be a little different from what you guys had, because I found a mistake in my formulas. I didn't collect two numbers on the bottom of the spreadsheet, so I apologize for having a little bit different number. We subtract out the 86.8% building aid that you should get, and we did not think, we didn't, to be conservative again, we didn't take the 100% of the project as being able, we only looked at 95%. I think the whole thing is able, but just to be conservative, we said 95%. So this number is 95% of this times 86.8%. We get that number. You have a capital reserve that's out in somewhere from a long time ago, 51859, and we think that we can add to that. And that adding, I'll let you guys talk a little bit about that. I'll keep subtracting before we subtract further. So what is existing in capital reserve from a long time ago, minus Excel Aid, which is another funding stream that the state had a few years back, subtracts out from the bottom because there's still money in Ken Jefferies pot for that, brings us down to 784. If, if there's fund balance and debt service, right, if we can transfer over to capital reserve, I don't know what the total number is that we're looking at for that. Does it cover the 784? We were talking about a number that was pretty close.
Yeah, using those other two sources, that number, that 784 goes down to 121. It's down to 121.
So then the local share for the whole project would be 121.
It's going to be very complicated to explain. We'll have to work on that, because they're going to see the big number and know, what the heck? Same way I did when I looked at the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So that's great news, we just need a good, a good way to explain that.
Public yard campaign.
So what are the next steps? Where are we going from here? In order to get that first capital project to a referendum and get the community to agree on lending, agreeing to borrowing the money to pay for the project, there's a couple hoops that we have to jump through that the state has to explore. One of them is SEACER process, State Environmental Quality Review Act. That's kind of like standing in your back driveway and telling your neighbors that you're going to paint your house. I want to paint it purple. And they all have the opportunity to say, I don't like purple, I want to, can you think about doing another color, please? Well, State Environmental Quality Review Act says, you as a school district, basically ask if you can be, the board asks if they can be the lead agency, saying, I want to paint my house purple. In this case, you're saying, we've looked at all the environmental impacts that this potential project can have on us and the surrounding area. We don't see any negative impact. We've done a long-form environmental assessment form to back that up already. And you go to the DEC and the State Education Department and a few other state agencies and say, here's our project, there's no environmental impact, are you okay with us moving forward? Can we take the lead agency status? They say, you, yep, have at it, I don't want to be the lead agency. You guys take that headache, and then we move forward. So tonight, we're presenting the basic scope, and we're actually presenting the whole scope, everything that you guys asked us to take a look at and you had in the big spreadsheet, that 19 million. And we've done the environmental assessment on that 19 million dollar piece, so that you don't have to come back and do a SEACER again if you decide to do an EPC or another capital improvement project. That way, we've got it all done right now. And then on the 28th, hopefully all the stars align, all the agencies come back, and it's already said, which I think that's pretty much the case already. They've said, we're fine, you guys are it. Then you guys say, okay, we'll take lead agency status. And then in October, set your bond vote date. You have to have a 45-day posting period between when you do that, when it gets published in the paper, and when there's the actual vote. So that takes us all the way down to December 5th. But in between those times, we want to get a public information campaign. So that's when Ben comes in, and we So that's when Ben comes in, and we've talked about strategy on doing that already. It includes a series of meetings, some mailers and brochures, and minus anything.
Videos.
Videos, right, thanks. Social media campaigns. Yep. Thanks, guys. I think there's one more. So here's the schedule in a graphic form. We're here roughly, sorry, Mark.
One of the things that we discuss in the building grounds committee usually, probably previously, is that this phase one project is really a must do. There's not a lot of things that we, oh, this would be nice, it's things that really need to be done. And I think that's one of the things that we need to talk about when we're presenting this to the public, is that, you know, these are things that really have to happen. Phase two, there's a lot of things that we'd like to do, that would improve the situation in our student district, but are not absolutely necessary, there are things that, you know, this would be really great for our students and our student community. So, and I think that's going to be a big selling point for us.
So this is the same schedule, just in a graphic form for people that think that way. We go through the seeker process, there's a public information campaign, and then what happens, SEI goes away, back and forth with the district administration, with the people that are going to be using the systems that we're designing, meet with them a bunch, and come to a point where we've got a set of contract documents that go to the state, and the contract documents go to the state because the state issues your building permit. It's one of the, one strange thing in New York where the local municipality is not giving you a building permit for all the schools, state does. And that's because there's a whole set of rules that pertain specifically to school, and they want to make sure that all those rules are followed and met, and we're doing our little...
Yeah, thanks.
Right now, that process for SED review to get your building permit is 30 to 32 weeks. It's huge. We're hoping that that comes down. Roseanne, who heads up facilities planning, has come up with a way that she thinks that she can do that. She's asking for third party reviewers to help cut down the project timeline, or the review timeline. So we hope that that nine months, 10 months can go back down to six at some point, but right now, we wanted to include the full amount, being conservative again, just in case. So figuring that nine months really sets when we have to be done, because we want to make sure that you're bidding in the right time of the year. Bidding in July and August is a lot different than February, March, or March and April. And Christmas is almost, I think so.
Do you want to have bids that late, or do you want to have construction starting?
We're showing construction starting in May.
Okay.
So this bid in a work period is really, for your size project, I would picture a four to five week bid period. And then there's, we're showing two months of effort there, because there's some time there.
I'm trying to find, follow the lines, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I would naturally think that you want that kind of in the winter, so people are still booking their business.
December, January is too early.
Right.
April, May is too late.
So it's in that window, so February, March.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to do it, if we could get back to November and October, I'd love to bid then.
Yeah.
But not with all that we have to do and as long as SED takes to review. So it's really a crunch, and that's, so you know, that's why SED's review time is so long, because everybody tries to hit that window. Everybody tries to get every project in between end of June and beginning of October. And so you'll see that SED's project list goes from a couple hundred to seven or eight hundred in that time period. And that's why we're at 30, 32.
Just a question, I think on the previous slide, you said the vote was in December, and here it says vote in January?
That's my mistake, I apologize.
Which is the right one?
December, we're targeting December 5th.
All right.
I think there's one more slide.
Can I follow up on your must have idea? Is anything on the lead issue, does that need to be in this? I didn't notice anything that would call that out to me, because I think we still have some drinking fountains that aren't, because we found lead back then, you know? Should that be on this must have list, or are those short term things that we're fixing some other way? And when does that happen, because it's been a while?
So all of our, if there is something that comes up, and if it's a few drinking fountains, our numbers include a 15% design and construction contingency right now. So if you've got a few drinking fountains that we need to take care of, just challenge us to take care of it as part of the project. I'm sure that the budget can absorb little things like that. If you came to me and said, hey, there's a whole nother wing of the elementary school I got to do, I'd be like, oh, let's figure that out.
Those have been remediated, they're in the process of being remediated as we go and getting second testings on those so we can have those results. That has to happen, that would happen before this.
I was just thinking, the things that have come up, that I didn't see on here, I want to make sure of that.
Yep, they're still being addressed, yes.
Right.
One of the things that they explained to us is that when we go to vote on this, on this capital project, we're given authorization to spend X dollars. If subsequent to the vote, assuming that it is approved, if we need to, you know, change some, some of the things within the project, we're able to do that. So not, not like a chisel and stone, this is what it will be, although generally, mostly what...
Yeah, we want to be set with the scope by the time we go out to the public information campaign, but if the budget is big enough to swap scope out back and forth, because the way that we structured the seeker process and the way that we hope to work with attorneys to write the referendum language, we feel comfortable in the ability to swap things out if we've got that opportunity.
So we could reprioritize a little bit if we want?
Correct, so if the control prices came in really good, and we decided that we wanted to do door hardware at another time, we could just say, all right, let's take that budget that we have for door hardware and offset it and try and squish everything together.
The financial impact that you guys did for phase one, did we do any rough look at what phase two would mean, financial impact?
No.
How far out are, that's stated wrong, sorry. When are we able to kind of get that idea?
We were going to wait to look at that after this first part was the process, and then we're going to have phase two.
The reason some of the numbers are in flux from this presentation is, we just met on Tuesday, and that capital outlay or capital reserve piece is one of those things that's in flux. But we did talk about trying to set beginning of the year as the time to get a better handle on what phase two size could be and when it could be.
I just think the more we can paint that picture, right, that all this stuff is on the list, and here's the small portion that local people are paying, the better that whole PR aspect is. And the better we can get people to buy off on what are we trying to do in our district, you know? So.
Thanks for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you, that was great presentation.
Thanks. Any other questions for me, or concerns?
Are you going to get the figures for us in terms of the tax impact of the project?
Fiscal advisors is working on that, correct? Yep.
Yeah, we have that. If we use all the funding that we were talking about, the part of the debt service fund, the cap reserve fund, and then some fund balance, the, they came up with the local share being the 121,000, and it says the tax rate for a home valued at $100,000 would be $2.25.
So it's really minimal of an impact on the taxpayer. I think that would help the most.
The other question that came up on our Tuesday meeting was around the capital reserve fund. We have one, it has money in it. The question for Gervin and for Lozo was, what do we do with that? Do we need to have reauthorized, have the voters reauthorized the capital reserve fund? And do we need them to do that before, after, or at the same time as a potential project vote? So our course of action is to have the voters authorize, or vote on authorizing another capital reserve fund. We can do it at the same time as the project vote. They would also have to vote to move the $51,000 or some change, it's about that, from the existing fund into the new one. Reserve funds have a shelf life. Our last one, which was done in the year 2000, the shelf life has expired, they're about 10 years for the shelf life, so we would need, it's like the bus reserve fund. So you would need to do, the voters would need to do that for another one, to move the money over, and then to add in any additional funds into the capital reserve. That would all be part of the resolution and can be done at the same time as a potential referendum.
I just have one other question. I only saw one of the, what I, in my brain, put in the maintenance category, I think you said it was $100,000 a year or something like that.
Yeah, you're right.
If we're phasing this over multiple things, I would think we'd want to have that hidden every single one of them, right? Because it comes back to us.
Yeah, it's in your best interest to try and do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and because there's so much money that's sort of up in the air right now, some of that will shake out into those capital outlay projects.
And realistically, then if you're keeping this at 121,000, and you're spending 100,000, you're getting 100,000 back, right? So after the first year, you got 100K coming back, which is going to help you pay for...
You get your 86, 800, right, yeah.
But you follow, it's financing a large portion of what it's costing the taxpayers for the next one.
And when you really make out is if you can find energy saving measures to do to that 100,000 dollar project.
Right.
That really multiplies. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anytime, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, can I still write the sticky?
Yeah. Thank you. So the next thing is public comments. If you want to do a quick bit of comments.
Thank you.
You see, one, our next part on the agenda is discussion about the reserve, which we, before we get there, I'd like to, very excitedly, and, welcome to our middle school, Mr. Paul.
Thank you very much.
And I wish you a long and happy home. Okay, the board, to your board retreat. Has, you know it's scheduled for the 19th? And there's one question, important question that we have to resolve, it's all a few other things, is where? Two choices, in the cabinet, in the superintendent's conference room, or at the bowling alley. And we need to just decide where. So floor is open for discussion about that. Well, let me just say that, you know, the bowling alley is, you know, it's nice to just go there and eat and then have a meeting. The thing that's nice about the conference room is it has much more electronic, you know, facilities so that we can, you know, take advantage of those. So it's basically to us to decide that, that we should make the decision now. So does anybody have any thoughts? Obviously, we can get food brought to the conference room, because we don't have to eat.
Yeah, I don't have preference one way or the other. You know, it depends on the presenters, do they, do they need to use electronics, or is it handouts or is it more, I guess, I just don't know.
There's definitely the electronic portion, so.
I would tend to agree with that. I mean, a lot of people that do training carry their own projector kind of stuff, so I would put it to them, what do you need? And if they say, we need all that stuff in hand because we can't bring it with us, then I'm fine with holding it in the conference room. But a lot of people that do training have portable, portable units now are kind of common with trainers, so whatever they need, and then make that decision, if that would be mine, but...
They have requested for AV equipment.
They have requested for, okay, probably they requested that we would apply AV equipment somewhere.
Just to have a second.
See, I would call it the choice of both.
All right.
Okay, then, I know it's kind of a late issue, but we have to decide what kind of food. Anybody have any preferences?
Lobster, steak, no, joking, no, no, I have no preference, you know?
No peppers.
No peppers. Okay, good. I'm assuming we order from local areas, so, you know, whether it's, you know, could be pizza, sandwich, it really makes no difference, does anyone have any dietary restrictions?
Around here, you could use two choices, Chinese or Italian.
Let's take some of that in here, just to...
Time with me, time with me, really, yes, I'm assembling.
Some way to eat some salad.
Salad, yes, salad, yeah, please.
What?
Yeah. Exactly, it's something for me here a while.
I'll, I'll just contact, I'll take orders.
I, I eat anything, so it doesn't matter, doesn't matter. If anybody has preferences that can govern the conversation, doesn't matter.
Anybody need any things?
Yep. You said no peppers, right? Yeah.
That's right.
That's the only restriction that I heard.
I spoke with Jamie Pearson, who's going to be facilitator for DISPA, and there, as of Monday, when I spoke with him, he said there were still two questionnaires outstanding. So I just encourage anyone who's not yet filled out the questionnaire to do so. And, you know, it's up to Dr. 24.
I didn't get any confirmation back.
I didn't get confirmation, but I did.
As long as you submitted it, I'm pretty sure.
I, I did mine today. I just, I, I thought it was the same one that we did before, so I was a little confused, like, do we do it again?
It was, but this one was confidential, so.
Yeah, and they wanted it electronically.
Yeah, yeah, which is, which is fine, I just didn't...
Okay, I was just, I was trying to expose it.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great. I was just thinking though, when you said that, I didn't get an email, because you don't put an email in or anything, so it looked like it worked fine, you know?
Yeah, I wondered. Yeah, I was listening to Mr. Paul.
Yeah.
Okay, then, so, and the discussion was, and he asked me to call him, so that gets my background, and so we, I told him that we wanted to do, explore the superintendent evaluation issue and the roles and responsibilities of board members, which is the two things we agreed on as the subject matter. And also, he wasn't aware that we wanted to also talk about legal issues, which would be very interesting, and I'm glad to do that. And I especially asked him to address the question of what we do totally inappropriate in terms of email communication to board members between meetings, so that we can have a better guidance on that. And so he'll also bring up other issues of current interest and, and notes, so that's what we want. Okay, anything else in the retreat? Student representative?
This is posted, but linked to the conference list. Printed it out, too, it's also posted.
Take it away, Danielle.
All right, so before I actually talk about anything, I've gotten like, actually like, bombarded with stuff today, like, people like, oh, there's a board meeting tonight, you should talk about this. So I've got a couple little extra things. One of the things I thought of myself was, tonight I participated in the application jumpstart course offered in the library with Mrs. Lyons, and just wanted to say I found that extremely useful, and I think that should be something that should be continued throughout, like, all the years of high school, because I honestly learned that I knew absolutely nothing about college. So there's that. Now I can get into what I, some of the stuff I typed up. The first day of school, honestly, I have participated in the STAR program, started my freshman year of high school, and I found it, this year, that there was so many people participating, more than ever. All the new activities that were included in the program this year, like, just a bunch of, like, extra, like, you know, sports activities, like, everyone really seemed to enjoy it. There was, the freshmen are always usually like, a little bit timid to participate in that type of stuff, and this year, it seemed like everyone really wanted to. Then we had the presentation in the morning by DJ Batiste and Mrs. P, and I, I think everybody found that really, really inspirational, we all loved that. DJ, he was really funny and also really inspirational. Then we also were told throughout today to think about our word. And then we learned at that presentation also that our word, we end up putting, put on a bracelet, like this one. And Mrs. Hammond, so, like, nicely, was so amazing, I don't know how she found the And Mrs. Hammond, so, like, nicely, was so amazing, I don't know how she come to kind of do it, punched everybody's words into these bracelets. And I, I love this bracelet, I haven't taken off since I got it on, I think, Monday. So that was really, really great. All right, on my next point was the school district Instagram. A school district has had an Instagram for quite some time, but it kind of, like, had a downfall and not much was getting done with it. So with our new media person, Ben Myers, I was asked to come in and learn how to do, like, everything for our school's Instagram. On that first day of school, the whole day, it's my busiest day, one of my busiest days of the year, because I do photography for the yearbook committee, I'm head photographer editor person for that. And so this year, alongside that, I was taking pictures on my phone, as well as my camera for the school's Instagram. That seemed to be like, a really, really great success, as we gained over ten followers that day, the post got plenty of likes. And we're, me and Mr. Myers are going to be discussing doing more days like this, where I posted something about every hour and a half throughout the day, and people really seemed to like it. So we're going to try maybe homecoming or spirit week, somewhere in there, doing another one of those type of days. All right, next point is the graphic design class. I'm in this class, so it's a little bit biased, but, you know what? So the graphic design class is taking on a project to also improve our school in the social media aspect. If you know Snapchat, it's an app where you can take a photo, and it's sent out for, you can, I think, like, maximum ten seconds. Part of the Snapchat app is being able to use these things called geofilters, which are things that can go, like, over top of your photos, that usually represent, like, the area that you're in. So the graphic design class decided, and this has been, obviously, since school started, so it's, we've gotten a lot, a lot of work done, and I'm very, very impressed. We are designing our own geofilters for the school and also the community. I'll pass these around, but everybody's working there, I'm not going to lie, like, these are all really, really amazing, so if you want to pass these around. So, yeah, so now that our rough drafts are complete, we're going to go into our next phase of the project, which will be going to Photoshop and making these digital. So, yeah, that should be fun to learn. It's a new process for everyone, because Mrs. Ecclestone, she had no clue about it. It was actually an idea that me and a couple of my friends came up in the class. So hopefully, it goes over well, hopefully, our school has some really nice geo tags, and that would be great.
Are you going to decide what we choose?
Um, we're going to end up actually, I think, submitting them all to Snapchat, it's a free process. The thing about it is they're very, very specific with what they accept. You cannot use anything like, any clip art off the internet, you have to do, it has to be all your own original designs. So we're going to submit them all, hopefully, at least a couple of them get used. If not, we're thinking about doing, like, for prom last year, we had geotag, one that was not permanent, just we had it for the night at the Waters Edge Lighthouse that I designed. And you can pay to have them just for like, one night, or like, a number of hours in like, a certain area. So like, say we wanted something for like, homecoming, like, there's one with a football player that's going around. Say we wanted that one for like, homecoming, we could pay like, the five bucks to, you know, submit that and have that used just for homecoming that year.
Do they cost money to have?
Uh, no, not the ones that are the permanent ones, those do not cost money. We just submit them and really hope that they, that Snapchat likes them and makes them into, you know, things that literally anyone who comes into our area will be able to see. All right, then my next portion is issues, which is something I really didn't want to talk about, but there's issues. So my first one, I've actually discussed both of these with Ms. Gleason, so I don't know how much I need to talk about them. But the first issue that we have found is the lunch line length. And I'm not sure how much of an issue this is during the first two lunch blocks, because I'm not in those. But the third lunch block is combined junior and senior class, and it's a little bit ridiculous. I personally don't have to deal with the issue, because I bring my lunch from home. But a lot of the people with the free lunch, there's a huge line. What I've noticed is, at the end of, like, the lunch block, it'll be, like, you know, that last student getting their lunch, and they've only got about five minutes to eat, which I personally don't think is enough, you know, enough time. But me and Mrs. Gleason are looking into that, and that'll be, you know, we'll figure that out somehow, hopefully. Then, the other issue that I came across was clubs, another thing also me and Ms. Gleason have discussed. Even though, like, clubs haven't, yeah.
Before you do that, can I, how long is the lunch period?
The lunch period is twenty minutes long, and we did time it two days after we got Danielle's report, yes.
But I didn't know when it started and when it.
Right, there's twenty minutes, yeah, and, and so I'm, I'm going to follow up with that on some things about free lunch when Danielle's done, because she's, she's raised a good issue that we're pleased to have. And it does seem that eleventh and twelfth graders are more taking advantage of school lunch than the other two grades. So, again, we've been in there taking some data, some hard data to corroborate what she's saying.
Yeah, I don't know if that was just because of the first couple of days of school as well, because, you know, more people were like, oh, I forgot my lunch, but who cares?
Or if it was chicken patty day.
Yeah, or, um, people.
Look, it's chicken patty day, I'm telling you.
People, I tell you what, people freak out over those garlic potatoes, people literally like, I, I'm nervous, people are going to like, start like, battling each other over the garlic potatoes, not going to lie. People freak out, like, I don't know, but it's a great issue to have.
It is.
All right, my other issue was clubs, even though they're not in full swing yet, many, I've actually been approached about this by quite a few people, is seeing the amount of time, or not the amount of time so much, but that people aren't exactly having enough time during, yeah, it is time, never mind, during their block five to participate in clubs due to labs being during that time. I know personally, from my point of view, I see with my friends, it's the calculus in physics labs that are kind of causing an issue with this, because all, you know, all clubs are being during the block five. And with students wanting to be in clubs, I only see it being an issue if, you know, they're not being allowed to participate in these just due to being in a lab or something like that. Yet again, that's something me and Ms. Gleason are discussing, and hopefully, that'll get worked out. I did have one more issue that was brought to my attention today, but far after I sent this, was the, how the first day of school was not displayed on the high school's webpage, because we got a lot of great pictures. I'm not sure if they were submitted in a way that people could have access to them, but I heard from actually numerous people wanting to see, because I know we have the school's Instagram and everything, but I know also a lot of people don't have access to that due to not having an account or not knowing about it. So sometimes the school's website is the only way people are getting this information and seeing what, you know, their children are doing. So people thought it would have been nice to see something about the first day of school on the school's webpage, and.
For specifically the high school?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So students are asking for us to put student stuff on the website for them to share. It's not a bad thing.
It's a great thing. All right, so do you have a meeting coming up with Mr. Myers by any chance?
Uh, we're trying to figure out when we can meet.
Okay, I will, I will relay that to him, okay? And I, we, one of the things, Danielle, that we, I don't know that we have, but we may not have a way for students to submit pictures, if people are taking pictures, or I don't know if you took some and submitted them to him, but those are things we can work out. I think it's a great problem to have, so let's just figure out the how, too.
It was nice to see all pretty positive problems, actually, like, you know, people are really enjoying the lunches, people want to be in, active in the school community.
I'll follow up with you on that and Mr. Myers, so.
All right.
Well, the one thing I just wanted to add, on the first day with DJ Batiste and P., it was inspirational to see everything. Do we have any video that can be made available?
We don't, but if, what I can do is put a link to that CBS report that they did, I can put that in the board notes. No, we put it out, it's out on the, it was out on the website, and we've had it out on some social media as well. I can put it in the board notes, and that's really, that's a small snippet of their journey, but their, their storytelling journey and how they present what they've done is something else.
It's, it's not often that we really move by, it's really exceptional.
Do I can just get back all those things, because we're going to be really in bad shape if we lose those.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, there, yes, thank you.
You mean the original artists can't do?
We would not want you to be nervous and in bad shape, but thank you.
I just want to thank you, Danielle, excellent presentation, and very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay, the next point is, relaxed by superintendent.
So I'm going to just continue on with opening day. It, it just was an outstanding start to our school year with the adults, and there were a lot of very positive remarks by everyone. And it set the tone then for the next day, where in all three buildings, there were student activities going on. It was a really relationship-building day. STAR has done their fourth year. East Hill did a few things around conscious discipline and got themselves going, right, with the practicing some routines and things. And at the middle of school, the work that they had done netted a full day of activities, and luckily, Mr. DiPaolo was able to join us for the first half of the day. And then we continued on with the activities for the rest of the day, to set a great tone to the school year. It has also inspired quite a bit of interest in conscious discipline throughout the district. So in October, they're having a two-day conference on school culture, and we'll be sending a cross-district team, which was an outgrowth of the interest that people had, to that conference, and then we're going to start making some plans from there, so it was very exciting.
Who's the "they"? The "they" are holding the conference.
Oh, unconscious discipline folks.
Okay, so just the conscious discipline people?
The conscious discipline organization is, the conscious discipline organization is having a conference. We are sending two high school teachers, two middle school teachers, and Mr. DiPaolo, and how many from the elementary?
Sure.
And one, one elementary person. It's a two-day conference on culture, it's not the big training that they do in June, but we had quite a bit of interest in it, so we reallocated some resources so that we could send teams from all the schools, which is nice. So we're very excited about that. We're also talking about how to have, either by video conference or little videos, DJ and Mrs. P. come back and remind us of their story, so we can be mindful of the things that we want to do with students. When we talk about food service, just a couple of things. We have completed this year our third year of summer food provision, third or fourth, I think it's third. This year, although our overall participation remained constant, there was a small gain of six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. So that was nice to see, and that was nice to see that we were able to feed students breakfast and lunch over the summer. Now, we, and to Danielle's point before about our community eligibility program and feeding every student breakfast and lunch for free, we knew going into it, we would have to monitor it and react quickly. Breakfast at East Hill Middle School is wildly successful. And so we adjusted quickly, because we had lines going all the way back to Mrs. Telsa's room down the East Hill hallway for the first couple of days. Granted, one of them was French toast stick day, that is a popular breakfast, but we still have lots and lots of students participating in that. So what we did was start a second line of a grab-and-go breakfast, and we, that has significantly improved, and rather than particularly some middle schoolers walking away, everybody's staying in line, everybody's getting a breakfast. We are, lunch appears to be going well. At the high school, we are watching that third block lunch, as I mentioned before. It does appear our juniors and seniors are more likely to eat school lunch. So we are doing some time studies of how long it takes to get through the lines, what the lines look like, and what it looks like based on certain menu items. Like, some days are going to be bigger than others, that's what we're trying to pay attention to. We already have a rapid response plan, if you will, for how to navigate that if we need to do something to move that second or that third lunch line along, so.
Are you able to do like, a grab-and-go type lunch as well?
We, that's one of the things that we're looking at, if, if that's something that we could do for some students.
What is the grab-and-go? Grab-and-go breakfast look like?
It's yogurt, cereal, um, I haven't been over there.
So it'd be equal to like, a bag lunch?
Like, the bag lunch, yes, so it's, it's that idea of something quick, if you wanted to grab fruit, something that doesn't have to be served or scooped.
Okay.
So Laurie is real, and she'll be back, we have her down to, in November, to come back to the board to give a progress report. We all, will also start looking at how we can increase participation and what other marketing, if you will, we can do to get students to take advantage of the opportunity.
Is our first blush that our participation has gone up at all in lunches?
Um, I think that's kind of hard to say with just a few, being one weekend to the school year, we're going to need a little bit more time for comparison data.
I don't remember how far we were short, I know we thought we were close, but I don't, I know we were a little shy, so we didn't need participation to go up, if I remember our conversation.
Yes, yes, we do want participation to go up, the more participation we have, the higher our reversion rate.
Right.
So we are just monitoring that, and we're just going to make adjustments as the year progresses, and we're just going to have to watch it, but we're not going to take our foot off the gas in terms of encouraging students to do that. In this building, you may notice that Mrs. Donlin Brody has put some signs around about eat for free, and what's free, come find out what's free, that's about breakfast and lunch. So that's where we are. And the last item, the capital reserve fund, I already discussed that when Eric was providing his presentation about the scope of the project.
Okay, thank you. Back to school opening day.
So every year, we take attendance on the first five days, and there's just a synopsis. Enrollment at the beginning of last year, in September, or, I'm sorry, the end of last year was nine hundred and thirty-five students. So when we look at June of two thousand and seventeen to September, our opening enrollment is nine hundred and forty-eight students, so that's an addition of thirteen students. But when we look at timeframe to timeframe, net enrollment from September of last year was nine twenty-one, September of this year is nine forty-eight, and we do include in that our UPK three-year-old students. So that twenty-one includes, how many?
Eighteen.
Eighteen UPK three-years, thank you. So you also have the tallies that we have as well. So it appears that we are where we're going to stabilize, which is about nine hundred and fifty enrollment. That's good.
I was a little confused, it said without out-of-district students. So on the chart that's in here now.
Yes, so if, if you take the non-resident students.
The sixty-four.
The sixty-four and the nine Head Start students, you would actually add those to the nine forty-eight, which takes us about to a thousand, a little over a thousand students. So those, that sixty-four includes children of employees and students here under policy seventy-one thirty-one.
Any questions?
I'd like to just make a comment. I had the unexpected pleasure of dropping my kids off in the morning and actually picking them up, and it was just really nice and organized and friendly, and I was just really pleased to see the systematic approach. Even at the end of the day, I was expecting buses to get out late, kids, where am I going? I didn't see any of that, it was a pleasure to see Mr. DiPaolo, which I was like, what are you doing here, I didn't think you were going to be here. So I dropped my, you know, my middle school kids off and my elementary kids, and I felt very good and very pleased about what I saw, so, you know, thank you. It was just really nice to, I didn't see really any kids crying, and, you know what I mean, or lost or confused. But you know what I mean, you know, when, you know, and I can sometimes be hypercritical, and it was just nice to see. So I got that feeling, I'm sure parents who were involved with that, I'm sure they got that same feeling, where they felt good about bringing their kids to school, dropping them off and then picking them up, so nice job, guys. Just very pleased to see that. Just very pleased to see that.
Okay, anything else? Can we move along? The next item on the agenda is vision group. Uh, we should met on Tuesday and it's very challenging.
Sure, and Scott, join, join Braden if I forget something. Um, what we did for the meeting on Tuesday is we wanted to look at the changes that the board may, wanted us to look at from the board meeting on August tenth. So we looked at those things and did some rewording of getting the, there it is up on the screen there. Refining what our vision was and playing around with words and you've got, everybody got a copy of it too. Um, our next, we're making a presentation to the board on the twenty-eighth. So we're meeting again on the twenty-sixth, just to refine a little more.
So I think the area that we have a little more work to do on February eighteenth on, on Tuesday was the values. We wanna kind of refine that a bit. We're, we're feeling really comfortable with our vision and our mission.
And the mission.
At this point. The values, we wanna refine a little bit more what that list is and we wanna put some definitions around what we mean by that in our district.
Oh, is there any helmet or questions or? Okay, well, I have some comments. In the, um, the area, uh, we're all ready.
Okay.
Um, it's, one of the things that I really, well, it's, the whole thing about critical thinkers and so forth is pretty important. And I don't get the same to know, but I do, so, okay. Okay, so being inquisitive, critical processing information, forming our opinions, communicating effectively, working together and learning from failure. Um, one thing I, I think would be an important addition to that, um, although it's obviously a priority to decide, would be being advocates for change on issues they deem important. Although it's not just being, these are all good qualities, but then how do you use them? And I, I think that's a core concept to me at least and I was just, um, wanted to urge on that, be it considered. Whether it's adopting anyway, um, is up to the clear. On the values, on civic engagement, again, I would, would suggest that advocacy is one of the, one of the things that we have. Values and civic engagement. And, um, third thought is, um, when sharing with the stakeholders, you know, once we have finalized document, um, I think it would be important to inquire about how they see the vision document changing our district. In other words, you know, in, in practical ways, is there anything, what, what does make, what makes, this document make the district different than it currently is? Because I really think that's what we're, we're all about, is to point, you know, point to the road ahead. Um, and I, I'm, you know, I just think it's important, important that it be looked at to see if the, if the documents have any effect in our town. And finally, um, I know this is like beating a dead horse, but does it, does it clearly express the concept of helping students identify and pursue their passions? If you agree this is a core concept.
Talking under values or where?
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure where that was.
Where, it's under the mission.
Yeah.
It's stated, the word passions is there actually.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I, I just feel like that would be a major change, I think, on our district and is to help students identify their passions and help them figure out ways to pursue it. Um, I think there's many people who go through their entire lives and were identifying what their passions are. And I, I think it certainly makes peo- would make students more engaged if they can identify what they're passionate about and we can figure out ways to help them embrace that passion and, and explore it. So just some ideas, reactions to my, overall, I'm very impressed with and excited about. Looking forward to, um, finalizing it and, um, getting it out there.
It's still a work in progress or, um, we're getting there.
I think ultimately, the board needs to see how this directs us to change. So if we don't see that in there, we need to be giving that input. Because I know I do, I, we've had those discussions in the, in the vision meetings.
I, I just really feel that things are clear.
Oh, no, no, I, I don't disagree that it's good to get feedback, but I'm just following along with your thought. I think the board needs to really see that in here as well because we're the ones that are gonna have to work on policies and budgets and those kinds of things that are coming from this. Because there are, in my mind, very explicit changes in here that require us to be united about to change our, what priorities we need.
And then, it's a call that needs to be a significant part of our discussion.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mark said too, that I'm, I'm very pleased and excited about this work in here. I like where this is. I know that this is a long time coming and a lot of people have worked very hard on it. And so I, you know, thank you for, you know, for everyone who's worked on it, contributed.
Okay, anything else? Next point on the agenda. So we are up to the minutes, August tenth and thirtieth. Do I hear a motion?
I make motion. Do you want to do them individually?
Oh, we have a consent, um, sorry, we wanna have a consent agenda for, um, the, the A through F items. So, do I hear a motion to?
Yeah, I would make a motion for that.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Um, A through F?
A through F.
Oh, sorry, okay, please.
Uh, so all in favor?
Actually, there, there's a problem with that.
Yes, I can, on A.
Because then she can't go on the rest.
Can we do A separately?
Sure.
Okay.
Consider here?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, do A separately and then B through F is considered agenda?
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, minutes.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, comments? Okay, we've got, we'll vote on both of them together?
I'm gonna do that.
Okay, on the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
From both.
abstaining.
Oh, from both, okay, all right.
Okay, then on motion for consent agenda on Bud, on E through F.
Motion.
Is that it?
Okay, budget transfers. Any questions or comments?
No, not for me.
No, I just made, I had a number written, so I wanted to know if it was in that one. No, it wasn't in that one.
So then you have bills, general federal. Any questions on those?
No, not for me. I had a couple. One was, um, Heinemann, I just didn't recognize that one.
That's, um.
Seems pretty sizable, so.
That was, um, we purchase some elementary reading.
So is that a, is that a company or?
Yes, yeah, it's called, yeah, it's called Heinemann Educational Works.
Okay, then I probably wouldn't question it. It could have been somebody's name.
Yeah.
The other one I had was the Plattsburgh City School District.
I was wondering why it would be so generous to that as well, it's a question.
Yes, that was for, um, a student that was placed in foster care that was at, placed inactive school district.
So we owed that district money, okay. The next one I had was, it appears we had an electrical problem. Seventy-five hundred in parts and twenty-two hundred in service to Gray Electric. It sounds like a pretty substantive electrical problem.
What was the number?
Well, there's parts from, um, Allied Electric and I know they don't do service in Collesville, so it's just parts. And that was seventy-five hundred and then twenty-two hundred from Gray Electric, which I assume was service. Did we have a problem? That was really my question.
Um, not that I know of, I was very.
That's ten grand on electrical.
I've been watching. I was wondering here, was it, um, the conversion of the cooler into the freezer in the kitchen? We will check on that. I believe what it might be is we had a, a cooler in the kitchen we need to convert to a freezer because as we get more subsidies for food, for our food program, we get more government-issued food that needs to be frozen and we've run out of freezer capacity. But let me check on that. I'll check with Gary, I'll put it in board notes tomorrow.
And I didn't, I didn't recognize RH Crown Company either, that was almost ten thousand, so.
That's all of Gary's supplies, doesn't save supplies where you're coming out of Johnstown.
And McGee Elevator, did we have an elevator issue? It didn't s- forty-three hundred didn't seem like maintenance, like the one we just went and visited.
I think it was.
Was it really?
Yeah, it's me.
So we only have one up, elevator, right?
Um, two.
Two?
There's one in East Hill and there's one here, but we'll double check on that.
It just seemed like a lot for checking it out. Those are my questions.
Anything else? I have two questions. Uh, one is loving guidance, it sounds very nice.
I saw that one, I remember it.
Forty-eight hundred dollars from us, I was wondering what they are.
That is all the, that's conscious discipline.
That's what I, I remembered it from somewhere, I was like, okay, I know that was programmed.
That was for the conference sometime.
And my other question was, at a previous meeting, we had discussed the use of the credit card and we brought together several of those painted credit cards. Here it is.
Just waiting for the question. Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
So is this, is this all under one card or are these, these people all issued a card or?
I, I have an account, I have a card that, we have a couple of cards with people's names on it, so my car, my name is on the card.
Okay, so all the cards have your name in it?
No, this one has not. Yeah, um, Gary, myself, Mrs. Grubshaw and Stacey, you know. Because at the time, those were the people we had.
That.
We're just hanging out.
And is there a limit on the cards?
Not on each individual card.
Not on each individual card?
It goes on the account. The whole account is twinned up.
Is there a purchase limit? That's a credit limit, it sounds like from what?
That's the credit.
Is there an individual purchase limit or anything like that?
Just one, just one note, the seven-one for the one-eighteen, that was lunch for eleven attendees. I just don't want you to think I was having it here. Like, what was that lunch that she was having?
So just from a food, from a foodie's perspective, I just wanna ask a couple of questions. So there's three people that have named cards, are there any other, are there like duplicates, Mrs. Grubshaw cards? Okay.
So now we have treasurer's report, a question about treasurer's report. Okay, so now we can move on to surplus items.
SCI contract?
No, transportation.
Oh, transportation.
Oh, sorry, I missed it, sorry. I'm bad. Any questions on transportation? Any questions on surplus items?
I, I had a question, it's not a big thing, what do we do with our surplus items? Are we selling them? Do we throw them out? Are they, you know, what generally do we do?
For large items, we have an online auction that we're part of, so we try to auction them if we can. Um, some things we may donate or may just allow others to use because once they're surplus, then they really have no value.
All right, so we don't designate what we do, what we throw out, what we give away, what we sell, it's just.
Well, the bigger, the bigger items, though, we, we've had that discussion earlier, the bigger items are all done through some auction.
They're done through the auction, like the big auction.
Yeah, these all look like mostly books, it's kind of old stuff that are outdated.
Things are outdated.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, that's what I figured, that's all.
Question?
Anything else? Okay, so we can move ahead to a vote on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed, standing, aye, passes. Next up for approvals is the SCI contract. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, we tried to answer the questions, I just wanted to make sure they were clear.
Yeah.
And this was the same form we had before with?
Yes, with questions answered.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Passes? Next item is certified administrators as reevaluating leaders. Um, by a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion?
My question was why you weren't attending this.
Well, because while some of the administrators went to a full-day training, I am actually doing my recertification in an online format.
So it's still forthcoming.
Mine will be done by the end of September. Mr. DiPaolo will be going to one at September.
Twenty-seventh is my refresher.
It's his refresher, so you'll be able to certify to both of us at the.
That was my, yeah.
You have to do it every year. I chose a different format this year.
Show modern one. Okay, so, uh, any other questions, discussion?
Is there a deadline that has to happen by? I just don't know.
No, end of, at June of two thousand eighteen.
So within the school year?
Yeah, within the school year. We try to get it done in the summer or early fall so that we can keep it moving.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Change? Passes? And the Anderson Center for Autism Services Division?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I just wondered, why do we have individual, it looks like this is an individual contract on individual situation. And when you look at the payments, there's payments to them already. So do we not have some like blanket contract that this just falls under anyway already?
Do, but this is something that falls out of the norm every three years. The student comes up for a reevaluation and we have options. So if a district's tent is closer, they can send a school psychologist to go and do that. This particular participant is to our UI. Um, so this is a as needed, so it's not something that is wrapped in every three years. They just state, yes, we will do the reevaluation, we have to formulate across that.
And it's not under our contract from a price already rearranged or pre-arranged or something?
No, unfortunately. I tried to work that with some other agencies last year, but no, it was.
I mean, I understand that it would be an extra fee, but it seems like you could list the services and have fees in our general contract. That's what just didn't make sense to me.
And I would love for you to come and also state that with me because that is, I completely agree and I've had that conversation with other agencies regarding that because it does come up every three years. But we have to formulate process, part of their process, I have to do the same thing as doing the place at Collesville, Richmondville. And we were doing that with each of them, both of us, but our school psychologist does that, so.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stand?
Stand.
If you pass this. Okay, do I have a motion to?
Do you stand? She was sorry.
Um, can I have a motion for it to executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. And I couldn't believe it, I showed this one item.
No, that was you. I didn't want you to forget about it. So I think you're one. And then would you grab the camera, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We trust you. You're so trustworthy about.